Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Victorville City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce. I am Marshall Haprov with the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District and it is my honor to serve this forum as your moderator. This is one of four candidate forums and the candidates were divided into their respective groups using a blind draw system. We'll ask a series of questions for each candidate to answer. This is not a debate and we do not encourage our participants to refute or rebut how their opponent answers the questions. Each candidate will have one minute for opening comments. We will then proceed to the question and answer portion. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each question. We will finish up with closing statements, again with one minute for each candidate. Each of you participating in this forum has the ability to unmute yourself when I introduce or call on you to answer. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Please remember to mute yourself when you are finished speaking. If you unmute yourself and attempt to disrupt another candidate's time or disrupt this forum in any other way, we will restrict your ability to unmute yourself. We are recording this forum and will publish it on the Victor Valley Chambers website and social media platforms. Our timekeeper tonight is Mark Crefield, the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce President and CEO. Mark will start the timer when you begin speaking and will hold up a green sign. When you have 15 seconds left during opening remarks, the Q and A portion and closing statement, he will then hold up a yellow sign. He will then hold up a red sign indicating your time has expired. I will then thank you and we will mute your microphone. I would now like to introduce five of the 22 hopefuls who are running for the Victorville City Council election and here with us today. In alphabetical order, Elizabeth Becerra, Lionel Do, Roger LaPlante, Paul Marsh, and Kimberly Messon. We will now begin with opening comments. The order in which the candidates will speak was also using a blind draw. This will be rotated after each question. We will begin with Elizabeth Becerra. You have one minute.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Becerra. I'm running for the Victorville City Council. I feel I'm your best candidate. I've served as a public servant for the last 34 years working as a Victorville Public Works Supervisor. I have very much experience. I understand the budget. I understand where we need to go and where we need to be. I'm ready to work with the rest of the council members, whoever the other two may be. All I can say is please vote for me November 3rd or get out there and vote forever who you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Marsh, you have one minute.
Hello, everybody. My name is Paul Marsh. I'm running for Victorville City Council 2020. As a longtime resident of the city of Victorville, I've been out here since 1962, so I've seen a lot of growth. I've seen Victorville how it used to be. I've seen Victorville how it is and I understand Victorville, the direction that it can go. I sit on the Victorville Planning Commission right now. I do have a earnest concern for the development of our city. So on November 3rd, I do hope that, you know, I can gain your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Messon, you have one minute. Kimberly, you have to unmute.
Apologize. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Messon and I'm running for Victorville City Council. I am a lifetime resident of Victorville and after I graduated college, I was given the chance to work for Congressman Cook and serve my community in a different capacity. So I'm hoping to be elected to the city council and be able to expand that role and serve the residents directly in this community that I grew up in and was able to flourish and I'm hoping to give that back to the residents currently and future.
Thank you. Roger LaPlante, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce for conducting this forum. It's really nice to be able to get to talk to the voters before the election. My name is Roger LaPlante. I'm running for Victorville City Council because we're in grave need of leadership change. There's just constant bickering. Not a lot getting done for the residents of Victorville these days. We have to bring in new leadership. We need to clean the town up. We need to rebuild. Old town's a mess. I'm on the homelessness task force. And we have, we have to bring in professionals to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lionel Do, you have one minute. Lionel, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Lionel Do, candidate for Victorville City Council. I'm retired from the United States Air Force after serving 21 years as a medical manager. In doing so, being a resident of the city of Victorville for approximately 30 years or more, I, my goal is to secure the city of Victorville, provide safety and a robust economy and working with our managerial team, which I have the greatest confidence in. The city of Victorville is a growing city. We are now across 395. We are across the valley as relates to his area and we are growing. The question is, how do we grow and who can manage that growth in the best ways possible for every person, every child and every family? I believe I am that candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. I want to remind you all again to be aware of the timekeeper and please wrap up your answer before we are obligated to mute you. Question one. Serving as a council member, you are responsible for helping lead a multimillion dollar municipal corporation. What skills, experience and education do you have that suggest Victorville's residents should trust you with their city? Paul Marsh, you have 90 seconds.
Okay. Serving as a council member, right now, right now, I have background as far as the development of the city in, as, in the scope of the planning commission. You know, I have not, I have not operated multi-million dollar budgets. I'm not going to sit here and tell everybody that lie. The thing that I would, the thing that I am strong in though is participation. I will participate with the city, with the city staff. I will interact, ask questions that I need to ask and make the decisions that I need, that I feel needs to be made for the benefit of the city as a whole.
Kimberly Messon, you have 90 seconds.
So I've had the opportunity in the past three years to work on the congressional side as a staffer, which encompasses working with elected officials, community leaders, a lot of community outreach is done as well. I have that experience. I'm able to communicate well and I also know how legislation works when it needs to be enacted and the process in general. So I think it's very valuable to bring that forward to the community because I've been on one side of, on one side of, on one side of it, anyway, you can say, working on the federal side. Of course, this is working more directly with the people and being able to represent them and communicate well with other entities in the city that we would be needing to build relationships with. So I believe I bring that to the city as, as an employee on the federal side and hoping to represent them and make those communications with who we need to and build those relationships and working with other electeds and being able to represent the community effectively.
Thank you. Roger LaPlante, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, most of my career was spent with the United States Army. We did actually budgets and we'd have to sign for millions of dollars worth of equipment. I was with tanks and yeah, very, very complex pieces of equipment. So yeah, very high cost, high dollar valued items. Yeah, my, my experience comes from the military and the government that I've been around for 30 years. And I think the people of Victorville appreciate that and would be willing to give somebody with my expertise a shot as a city council person. Also, I've got two technical degrees from Victor Valley College that I use with my GI Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Lionel Do, you have 90 seconds. You have to unmute.
Executive experience requires that a person has to make executive decisions. Executive decisions are those that are far reaching. They are not your everyday decisions. In doing so, I have served in administration of two governors for the state of California. I have served at the county level. I have also served locally here in the city of Victorville amongst many organizations and entities or agencies. And having those relationships with individuals, I am one person who can work with others of like mind and get and progress the city of Victorville forward in a way that's give every citizen, child and family, security, safety and a robust economy. Having a job is one thing, but having a career is another. I would like to have an institution which people have careers in the city of Victorville. That's why the city of Victorville needs individuals such as myself and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Becerra, you have 90 seconds.
Well, as the question says, helping lead a multimillion dollar municipal. I feel I'm ready to help do that as a group of five. We all need to work together to do the safety and security for our citizens. Everybody's concerned right now is the safety and security of our citizens. We need to work this budget together. We need to figure out how we're going to make things work. We can promise you the stars and the moon, but if we don't have the funding there, we need to work together to figure out where we can go. My education, my experience, like I said, I'm going on 34 years of working for the Public Works Department for the city of Victorville. I can continue helping you as a council member. I can continue making this go forward with the help of the other four council members. We need to be a group. We need to be together. We need to go forward for citizens so we can give you what you need in the safety and security.
Thank you. Question two. In May 2020, the Victorville City Council accepted a public safety plan that described how it would expand its, how it could expand its public safety levels. That plan also recommended the cost for an expanded level of service and the revenue necessary through measure P. Have you read the public safety plan and do you support measure P? Kimberly Messon, you have 90 seconds.
So I have read most of the plan. A lot of it deals with statistics, looking at should the measure pass fiscally? How it would impact? What needs to be improved? How much the community has grown? There are a lot of statistics in it. I am in favor of measure P. I do believe it is necessary in our community and thankfully it's something that our Victorville residents wouldn't directly have to pay into because it's not a property tax. We have seen the city grow dramatically over the past few years and unfortunately our first responders are still at levels that you would see them reporting back to a community that's a lot smaller than the one we currently have. So I do believe it'd be very beneficial moving forward in the future for the city of Victorville. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger LaPlante, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, I have read measure P and I'm for it. It took a little convincing for me because I'm a no tax guy, very fiscally conservative. But we're in an emergency situation right now and we're in, and we're in need of more first responders and measure P combines bringing in that kind of help with other municipal programs such as the library. You know, we have, we have to equal out our, our spending and our dollars to to meet the needs of the people, whether that be they need their police protection, fire protection, medical service, that, that needs to happen through, through the measure P. And I think that will help the citizens. So like I said, normally I'm not for taxation, but I think this is well represented by the city and actually I congratulate them for stepping forward to do that.
Thank you. Lionel Do, you have 90 seconds.
Public safety is, is the most important factor regarding governance. In doing so, I will support, be in support of those measures taken prudently to secure our city. That means fire, safety, police, roads and, and building. Once on the planning commission, a person indicated to me that they had, then I have adequate time to build a structure. And so I shared with them, the expedience is no substitute for excellence. That is my motto. Expediency is no substitute for excellence. Therefore, we must take the time out to do things right, correctly. No one can suffer a mistake, especially a tragic mistake that can cost someone's their life. So that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Becerra, you have 90 seconds.
Again, yes, I have read the measure P. I am in favor of it. The citizens need to understand, not only is our city going for a safety tax, the cities, the cities around us also are going for it. We all see the need that we have to go forward with this. We can help you. We can go with your safety, but you have to understand a $65 million budget is being taken, 64% of it for your safety and security. It's going to continue to rise. It's going to continue to go forward. Our population has ridden by at least 10% in the last two years. What are we going to do to help you? Help us help you pass measure P? Give us that extra dollars. Let us go forward with it. I'm sure we're going to be seeking the input of the citizens to figure out where we're going to go with this extra 1% sales tax. Again, it's not just us paying for it. It's everybody who passes through our city, going out to ride in the desert, going to Las Vegas and everything. Let's let them help us, help you get to where we need to be. Don't let the other cities around us also just let it pass and let their safety and security go forward. Let's all get this going forward together.
Thank you. Paul Marsh, you have 90 seconds.
Me, I'm in absolute support of measure P. Measure P is a starting point and again, in the city of Victorville, we have to look at participation. All references, participation from not only the city staff, city council, but also the residents. And I think from a resident standpoint, viewpoint, measure P, 1% tax on a dollar is a small price to pay for what it ensures. You know, we need more, we need more police. It's an absolute need. With the rise in crime and not only just the rise in crime, but more violent crimes, we need more police. We need more code enforcement. You know, the only way we're going to really clean up the city and move the city forward, we need code enforcement that's going to be able to focus on commercial properties, residential properties, things of that nature. So yes, measure P offers all that. It's a starting point and I think it's an essential starting point that the city needs. I'm for it and I do hope that, you know, the rest of the citizens of Victorville are for it also. And we vote yes on that measure November 20, November 3rd, I mean, I'm sorry, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three. If elected, what policy goals do you have for the city? And how do you envision accomplishing those goals if they are in conflict with the policy goals of your colleague council members? Roger LaPlante, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, I vow to work with anybody. It's essential because that's why we're voted in, to be representative of the people. It's not about the egos. It's not about the special interests that are sitting up there on the city council. It's about the people. So when there, when there is going to be conflict, which is inevitable in politics, I grant you that, especially this, these days, these crazy times, but sitting down, having counsel, having, you know, with difficult issues like law enforcement, like outreach, we need to have committees, people represented committees with, with members of the council also either co-chairing or co-chairing these committees. I think that will bring together all, all parts of the city, all the people, all the staff, all the council members and most importantly, the resident. And that's done by committee. So that's how I think we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lionel Do, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you for this question. I suspect I'm going to grow a rapport and a relationship with my colleagues on the city council. In doing so, we will forge ahead in making sure that the policies are always not in the best interest of ourselves, but in, in the best interest of every person, every child and every family. That's important. Doesn't matter whether a person has spent one year in the city of Victorville or 30 or more years. The fact that they're a taxpayer, they're resident, they are deserving to have the best government possible to serve them other than serving oneself. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Becerra, you have 90 seconds.
Policy goals I have in, in store for our citizens. We do need to look at our code enforcement. We do need to look at our animal control. We have all kinds of issues out there, it being code enforcement or animal control, safety and security. It's still the safety and security of our citizens. We need to work with them. We need to figure out how we can keep our citizens safe, keep our kids safe in the parks when there's loose dogs and everything like that. Everybody needs to feel safe no matter where they're at. Accomplishing the goals with the other four council members, we need to work as a team. If we're not working as a team, we've seen what happens with that. We can do what we can. We'll get with the citizens. We'll give you what you need, safety and security. That's where we need to put it home. And I will work hand in hand, side by side with my fellow council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Marsh, you have 90 seconds.
As far as a policy goal, you know, public safety is obviously a pet peeve of mine as far as we do need more police. We do need more code enforcement. Now, as far as working, being able to accomplish these goals with everybody that's on the council, we have to remember, we are a city at large, so our representation is not just for one group of people, but it's for everybody. One thing that I can assure is that, you know, whatever's put before me, whatever's put before me, I will research it. I will engage in civil discussion and make a decision now. And so that, that requires being able to reach, you know, reach out to the other four council members and being able to listen to their viewpoints and then make a decision, well, have discussion and make a decision. One thing that I do note is that even, it doesn't, it doesn't matter about party preference or anything like that. The decisions that we should be making in the city, that affect the city of Victorville are nonpartisan decisions. So that, that I can promise that I will bring to the council.
Thank you. Kimberly Messon, you have 90 seconds.
So some of the things I'd like to focus on are safe communities, better paying jobs, some opportunities for our children. And a lot of this encompasses, you know, economic development and prosperity, public safety, homeless issue we have in Victorville. And I believe the council has to keep in mind that we all have the same goal and obligation and that is to serve the people of Victorville. So while we may not all agree at times and we still need to take into consideration that we are doing everything for the best and most being of the people and we need to put aside anything else and focus on that solely. And that is on my side.
Thank you. Question four. What is your plan to deal with the homeless crisis in Victorville? Lionel Do, you have 90 seconds.
Homelessness is a crisis of itself. While serving on the planning commission for the city of Victorville, we cleared out a particular area and the majority of the people, let's say 60% of the people want to be on a better track of life. My question to the staff was, what was the response of other individuals who chose not to? And the response to that was that people chose not to follow rules. Well, I find that unacceptable. What I plan to do is follow models of success around the country or within the state of California. I don't think you have to recreate the wheel. There already are successful models existing within the state of California. And those models, we can adapt for the city of Victorville to resolve the homelessness situation. It will not take, it will not take a minute, a month, a year. It's unknown. That question is unknown. Nevertheless, we will resolve this issue to, in the best ways possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Becerra, you have 90 seconds. Elizabeth, we can't hear or see you. Elizabeth, are you still with us? Okay, we will move on. We will come back to Elizabeth after the other candidates have answered. Paul Marsh, you have 90 seconds.
Obviously, the, the homeless crisis in Victorville is, is a large one. There's a lot of ideas. There's a lot of things that are being implemented. One thing that I'm, I have to say is that the city of Victorville right now is taking measures and direction towards helping solve this crisis. One thing for me though, it's not just the focus on the homeless, even though that is the main, that is the main thing. What I have to look at, when I look at it, it has to be equitable solution for everybody. So what my thought process is and will be is not only keeping the homeless in mind, is making, you know, positive solutions for them, help for them, but also make it equitable to where our businesses, our commercial properties, our businesses. but also make it equitable to where our businesses, our commercial properties, our businesses are also in an equitable position and our residents, you know, so these are all things that we have to look at not, and when dealing with the homeless crisis. It has to be equitable for everybody in the city of Victorville, homeowners, business owners and the homeless themselves.
Thank you. Kimberly Messon, you have 90 seconds.
So as mentioned, the city of Victorville currently is going in the right direction. And if the navigation center or wellness center continues moving forward, it's something that I will continue supporting 100% if I'm elected to the council. I also believe that adding another officer or two to the hope team is also very important. They cover not just the city of Victorville, but the neighboring cities in the region and they interact directly with their homeless population and they're very helpful. And so I believe expanding that team as well would be detrimental to addressing the homeless issue. But also just figuring out who our homeless population is, are they still, did they suffer from the recession and never got back on their feet? Do they have mental health issues? Do they have addiction issues? Just really finding out in our specific city first, who it is that we're trying to help and hopefully give them the resources needed so that they can get back on their feet. It's also very important for us to address the issue head on. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger LaPlante, you have 90 seconds.
Yes. I, I was appointed to the homelessness, the city of Victorville's homelessness task force in May 2019. I started working with homeless many years ago, actually went down to the river bottom and, and found that there's just a hopeless situation down there. I found many veterans and I moved here from Iraq and it was just sad for me to see men and women that were in, in service to our country, getting shot at in combat, living down in, in the river bottoms. So I got active, got proactive. And, and now we're, we're working towards solutions. It, it's going to take a long time though. The Ninth Circuit is currently not working in favor of the citizens of the state of California or the United States, in my opinion, by continuing to allow camping, you know, in, in Sydney, city parks or everywhere, anywhere they want. That needs to come from the federal level and the circuit court level. Yes, there's a lot of good things that we can do, but if our government, government's not going to help us out with that, we're going to have to figure something out. It's an emergency on our streets right now and we need to take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for your answers. Elizabeth Becerra did not rejoin our call. So we will move forward with today's conclusion and our closing remarks. So we will begin with Paul Marsh. You have one minute.
Okay, I want to thank the Victorville Chamber for putting on this, this event, this, this forum. And as closing remarks, I just want everybody to just know the citizens of Victorville that are very serious about what I'm doing. I, I participate a lot with, with different organizations. I can, I'm concerned with the direction of Victorville. And I live here. I'm a resident. You know, I've grown up here. I've raised my family here. I work here. I run business here. So, you know, I will, like I said, I will bring benefit to this, to the dais, you know, if, if permitted to, as an, as an elected official. So I do hope that I gain your vote in November 3rd, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Messon, you have one minute.
Again, my name is Kimberly Messon and I did, I wanted to take the chance to thank Mark and Marshall as well for and the Chamber of Commerce for doing this today. I believe that I am a new voice and a new perspective to the residents of Victorville and I really hope that that is seen throughout this process and that I'm able to represent the city of Victorville and everyone here and be more proactive than the previous council has been. And I'm hoping to be able to serve at a bigger capacity, be able to provide new ideas to them. Thank you again.
Thank you. Roger LaPlante, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you Victor Valley Chamber, Marshall, Mark. Yeah, really, really good forum here today. I want change for the city of Victorville. I want honor and dignity brought back to the dais of the city council of the city of Victorville. We deserve that. It's a great place to live. We, we need to make it better. It's going to take all of us to do so. We need more jobs. We need high paying jobs. We need to fill in the manufacturing centers that are empty. We need to bring back the jobs that we lost to COVID. We need to rebuild our community at the grassroots level. If that's what it takes to rebuild it. The people deserve that, like I said. So vote for Roger LaPlante, November 3rd, 2020 and thank you.
Thank you. Lionel Do, you have one minute.
Thank you. There's no greater honor than to serve a people. In doing so, through my military career, I have lived and worked around the world. I know the appreciation of our country from the outside. I know the value of the city of Victorville from the inside. And being a resident and raising my son, my family and others, it's been one of the hallmarks of my life, public service. Serving others before you serve yourself is an honor that is second to none. I thank the Victorville, Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity to share our views. And I'm grateful to have this opportunity here in the city of Victorville. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce, I would like to once again thank all of the candidates for their participation in today's candidate forum. This recording will be posted once all of the Victorville City Council candidate forums have been completed. So thank you again, everyone, and please continue to stay safe and healthy.